It is now 7:08 PM and I am calling to order the Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie District 204 on May 3rd, 2021. Jeannie, please call the roll.
Ms. Donahue, here. Ms. Here. Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Peel, here. Mr. Razak.
Here.
Mr. Carubis.
Okay, we do have a quorum. With my physical absence, it is helpful for someone present to assume the chair. It is logical that since Lori Donahue is an officer, that she assume the chair. So I have a motion for Lori Donahue to chair tonight's meeting.
I move that Lori Donahue chair the Tuesday's board meeting.
Second, Kathy.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeannie, please call the roll.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye. Motion passes. Ms. Donahue, the chair is yours.
Okay, because we have myself appointed to, temporarily appointed to a president, we need to also appoint a temporary secretary. So I asked for a motion to appoint a temporary secretary of the board.
I'll make them. Go ahead.
I move that the board nominates Susan Demming as temporary secretary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeannie, please call the roll.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
And Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. So with that, we're going to move on. So Ms. Peel, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? So Kathy, we're going to keep you busy tonight because your last night with us. So would you please share our board salute?
The board salutes the District 204 students who won in the National PTA Reflections Art Program. The Indian Prairie Parents Council sponsors the program in our district and coordinates the advancement of our students' artwork to the state and national levels. District 204 students made up four of the six national winners from Illinois. The winners include Augustine Gillespin from Niqua Valley, Sanya Kapoor from Matia Valley, Adaya Nayak from Watts Elementary, and Indira Shirimbas from Frye Elementary. Congratulations to these students on this very well-deserved recognition.
Reflection. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a report by our student representative, Sean Feldman from Niqua Valley High School. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sean Feldman. The NV Student Council School Board Representative. As my pledge to represent Niqua tonight, earlier last month, Niqua announces Niqua Honor Awards winners, an award given to two students by teachers for leadership, spirit, service, and equity within our school. Congratulations to all the students who are recognized for their outstanding contributions to Niqua. On the morning of April 13th, Niqua hosted SAT testing for juniors in preparation for their senior year. Thank you to all the faculty and staff proctors, and best of luck to all those who tested. On May 14th, Theater Department's annual musical, Frozen Junior, will prepare to be viewed online. A story filled with adventure and humor, Niqua students have been working tirelessly on the show since the start of the semester. This show will be available to stream from May 14th through the May 16th for a small streaming fee. We can't wait to see all the Niqua student actors perform. Niqua student athletes continue to shine during the spring seasons. Niqua Valley football team capped their season earlier last month with a win against Matia. This was the end of an undefeated season for the Wildcats and a second consecutive DVC championship. Congratulations to NV Football on this achievement. Additionally, congratulations to Niqua Valley Badmen, who placed third in their state competition. On April 14th, 22 Niqua senior athletes signed letters of intent to continue their athletic careers at the collegiate level. Best of luck to these students as they face their new challenges in college. Earlier last week, Niqua hosted its 2021 World Language Honors Ceremony. This event celebrates students and their efforts at multilingualism. Students were recognized for their initiation into World Language Honors Society. Congratulations to those students on their hard work and dedication. On April 30th, Niqua Tri-M Honor Society premiered its annual benefit recital on YouTube. This recital features performances by the talented Niqua musicians, and all proceeds go to the Hesit House, a family shelter in Aurora. Congratulations to Niqua Music. On May 22nd and June 12th, the district will be partnering with Jewel Oscar Pharmacy to host a COVID-19 vaccine clinic for students 16 and older. This clinic will be held at Niqua Valley campus from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The first doses of Pfizer vaccine will be administered on May 22nd and second doses on June 12th. Our school is excited to take part in making history and keeping our community safer. With the end of the year fast approaching, Niqua seniors are beginning to celebrate their final years of high school. The annual Senior Spectacular was held earlier last month for students on the Niqua main campus. On May 1st, Niqua held its prom event for seniors, and this week on May 7th is the outdoor senior social, which will feature music and photo ops. And of course, senior commencement ceremonies will take place on May 28th at the Barbar Stadium. Congratulations to all graduating seniors, and best of luck as you head into your next journey. Lastly, today is the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week, and Niqua students are excited to give back to their teachers who put so much work and dedication into this freshman year. Thank you to all teachers for all you have done to make this year great. That is all for the Niqua Valley Board Report today. Thank you all so much for your time, and as always, go Wildcats.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. 30 minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Our first speaker is Tim Shields.
Thank you to Dr. Tally and the board for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm the father of a fifth grader at the STEM school that you've heard from on a few occasions. I also have two other district students, a middle schooler and a second grader. I'm disappointed that my second grader does not have the chance to even apply to STEM. In looking through the original STEM partnership contract, I don't see that it indicates a pause in enrollment as a possibility. What I do see in the contract in Article 1.2 is that any issue not addressed in the contract will be collaborated on in quote-unquote "good faith." It's certainly not in good faith to hastily close a successful school, but how is it in good faith to even pause enrollment? If contractually, the school would have at least one more year, no matter what, why deprive students of that opportunity? And beyond eliminating the third grade for next year, which it seems would violate the parameters of the contract, what about the empty spots available in other grades? Why not offer those spots to students on the waiting lists? To allow empty spots to go unfilled seems unfair and unnecessary. And please note, because my two children attend other schools in the district, I want the STEM school to exist to make their schools better. Additionally, I do want to thank you, Dr. Tally, for our phone conversation last month regarding the STEM school, and I thank you for recently visiting the school. In our conversation, it was mentioned several times that one of the reasons this STEM school is being considered for withdrawal is the lack of teacher rotation as intended. And I have educated myself further since that conversation, and I would like the board to consider Article 3.2B of the partnership contract, which describes that teachers from each district will be hired for two- or four-year appointments, and then will rotate back to the district. Each district has only a couple of teachers at the school at a time, so if the school was returning teachers as planned, that would still mean getting only a few teachers back within a six-year time span. But in 2018, the governing board voted to no longer require teacher rotation, so rotation was only implemented for four years. How is this the problem now? The truth is that teacher rotation can be impactful, but expectations of the impact have to match the stipulations of the contract. Teacher shadowing at STEM, in-service training days, Zoom technology, these are ways to bring the benefits of STEM back to District 204 quickly. Thank you to those of you who voted last week to not withdraw from the school. Until there's a more lengthy collaborative, transparent process involving all stakeholders, to table this discussion further is the only way for the board to operate with integrity. Please continue to be mindful of your individual fiduciary responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dylan Shields.
Hello, Dr. Tally and the 204 board members. I want to say thank you for voting last week to not withdraw from the STEM school. As I watched you discussing the STEM school last week, it reminded me of how I have to work on teams at school. At STEM school, I am getting lots of practice and working together and sharing different ideas. I know sometimes it's hard work, but I'm also learning how important it is to listen and stay committed to a project. Please don't take away from this STEM school, just because collaboration takes effort. I promise that the STEM school and what it could bring to our district is worth it. I really hope you liked my idea of using Zoom technology to bring the STEM school to the district. That wouldn't require much effort at all, but it could have really big rewards. I also wanted to respond to comments from last week's meeting that more girls and students of color deserve to experience STEM. These are exact reasons why there should, these are exact reasons we all should be so proud to have the STEM school, because my school is very diverse and half of the students are girls. Girls and the students of racial and ethnic backgrounds in our district are given the opportunity of a bright future in STEM because of the school. Thank you for not rushing a process to, or decision to close the school. You owe it to all students to be fully informed. Thank you for listening to my feelings.
Thank you, Dylan. Our next speaker is Angela Shields.
Thank you, Dr. Tally and the board, for hearing my thoughts this evening. I'm grateful that this board began to rebuild trust last week by voting no to withdraw from the STEM partnership. And to our two retiring board members, I was struck by the thoughtfulness and integrity with which you weighed your vote. I hope your legacy will be followed by all current and incoming board members. To have hurriedly added any conditions to that vote, whether it be two years or otherwise, would not have fixed the broken conditions of this decision process. From the original contract, it is not clear that such conditions are even allowed. The only responsible vote was to vote just as you did, to simply table this for now. District 204 has no control over the votes of other districts, but you earn the respect of your own constituents by not voting to close a successful school in haste. As you consider the STEM school in future discussions, I believe it is essential that all board members are knowledgeable of the original STEM partnership contract. I ask that you consider the four purposes of the STEM school as outlined in Article 1.1 of the contract. Number one is to meet the educational needs of the STEM students themselves. There is no question about the school's success with its students. It's exceeded expectations in fulfilling this purpose. The word laboratory has often been misappropriated in STEM discussions to indicate temporary, but laboratory in the contract is used to mean a model to develop best practices, and Article 1.1 clearly asserts that this is first and foremost a school which, like all other schools, is dedicated to educating its students. Number two is to enhance the professional development of teachers and have them return as district leaders. This purpose has not failed. It has simply not been utilized to your liking. As noted tonight, the teacher rotation was not designed to see a big impact quickly, but with teacher shadowing and Zoom technology, staff and students alike could reap immediate benefits. Number three is to stimulate the city and its businesses' ability to recruit, develop, and retain top STEM talent. Here is more evidence that this school was not designed to be a laboratory experiment discarded in six years. The school has not even been in existence long enough to produce college graduates ready to be hired by local businesses, but that goal is part of the written purpose of the school, and any city and business in this district can benefit from this long-term goal of investing in local talent. And number four is to establish a nationally recognized model for STEM education. The STEM school has already gained national recognition and awards, and will continue to do so with increasing influence if allowed to flourish. The STEM school's vision and purpose was to be duplicated, not discarded. For any future discussions, please commit to fulfilling your fiduciary duties and strive to understand all aspects of the school and its origin, as well as its unrivaled success and potential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next, our last speaker is Katie Pop.
Good evening. Board members contribute hundreds and hundreds of hours each year governing their districts. Whether crafting policies, hiring a superintendent, listening to staff and student concerns, or recognizing outstanding programs, Indian Prairie board members always do it with one mission in mind, to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. The time spent in board meetings represents just a small fraction of the hours school board members devote to their districts. They also read copious amounts of materials in preparation for each meeting, work hard at conferences and training sessions to keep up with the latest trends in board governance, are deeply involved in community activities, and spend many hours in the schools and at extracurricular events. Representing the Indian Prairie Education Association, I offer my thanks to Kathy Peel and Mike Razak for their service and dedication to the students and staff of our school district. Their love of learning and concern in caring for students have always been at the forefront of their decision-making. We hope you enjoy this next chapter in your life, and may you always feel that District 204 is a place you can call home. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. We have no, we have no comments for public, or no public comments for agenda items, so we'll move to the superintendent report. So Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community. I will start my comments by celebrating our three comprehensive high schools. US News and World Report recently published its 2021 high school rankings. All three of our high schools were in the top 50 of high schools in Illinois. Niqua Valley was ranked 20th in the state, Matia Valley was ranked 26th in the state, and Wabonzi was ranked 49th in the state. Both Matia and Wabonzi saw their rankings climb this past year. US News and World Report has been doing these high school rankings for more than 15 years and examines more than 24,000 high schools across the country. Scores are based upon college readiness, math and reading proficiency, math and reading performance, underserved student performance, college curriculum breadth, and graduation rate. I want to thank the staffs at all three high schools for their continued dedication and commitment to the students. High praise to our three principals for their leadership of their schools. May is National Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. This month, first recognized by Congress in 1979 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week, celebrates the art, culture, traditions, and the contributions of American people of Asian and Pacific Island descent who have made, what they've made to the growth and development of the United States. Our schools are individually celebrating this month through various activities. Today, Monday, is the start of Teacher Appreciation Week. I know that our PTAs and parents in their own way are showing their affection and appreciation for all of our teachers this week. I will say that we could not be where we are now without the energy, resolve, resilience, flexibility, creativity, and esprit de corps of our educators. We know that this year has been like no other year. Our educators have risen to the occasion more than once, and our children are achieving due to the exemplary work of our educators. I salute them all tonight in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. And as our student representative had mentioned, May 22nd, we are offering vaccination clinics for students who are 16 and older. As of today, we only have 600 students signed up for the clinic. Information may be found on our website on how to sign up for the clinic. And Ms. Donahue, I'll now send the meeting back to you.
Thank you. Our next item is our discussion item, which is a review of the results of the official canvassing for the returns from DuPage County Election Commission.
President Donahue consent agenda item.
Consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. This is what happens when you're new at this. All right. Next, we move to the consent agenda items. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through N.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items D through N as presented.
And do we have a second?
Second, Susan.
Any discussion? Jeannie, please take the roll.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Okay, now, the motion passes. So now we move to the next agenda item, which is our discussion item, which is to review the results of the official canvassing for the returns from DuPage County Election Commission of April 6, 2021, school board election, presented by Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. No action needs to be taken by the board, but we are required to review the canvas of the election results from DuPage County, which is our primary county, and these results include Will County. These results are in board docs. I will now review the results from the election in ballot order. Allison Faustic, 5,673 votes. Marina Kosak, 3,296 votes. Shannon Adcock, 4,451 votes. Lori Donahue, 6,514 votes. Yan Meimei Liang, 3,005 votes. Saba Heather, 3,168 votes. Susan Taylor Demming, 6,431 votes. Supna Jain, 5,632 votes. Carter Sarkaria, 2,505 votes. Raj Narayan, 4,354 votes. And Robert Harris, 3,144 votes. That is the canvas, Ms. Donahue.
Any discussion? Now we move to our action item. So we are going to need a motion to approve to appoint Dr. Tally as president pro term for the special organizational meeting until a new board president is elected. So I need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve to appoint Dr. Adrian Tally as president pro term for the special organizational meeting until a new board president is elected as presented.
Second, this Kathy.
Any discussion? Jeannie, please call the roll.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Our last item is our legislative and advocacy update and the Board of Education update. Does anyone have any items for discussion?
I have a board update.
Okay.
May I share that, please?
Yes.
So as my last duty as a board member, I would also like to express appreciation to our teachers, staff, and principals during Teacher Appreciation Week. With COVID-19, the educational world changed dramatically. Remote learning, Zoom meeting, in-person learning, delivery of hundreds of learning packets instantaneously and throughout a year and a half became a new way of instruction. The Board of Education received thousands of last letters sharing differing opinions, but almost universally, there was one common theme, and that is, our teachers, support staff, and principals were amazing. Please know that our Board of Education recognized the demands that you faced each day. We know that you worked harder than ever before. You, we know that you needed not only to instruct and care for our children, but also needed to be vigilant. Despite these demands, you not only met those challenges, but attacked them with amazing fervor. Most impressive for us has been your expressions of care and love to your students. Your videos, phone calls, and Zoom check-ins have reassured and comforted our students and school community. Teaching is hard work. Teaching with love is even harder work, yet it is our greatest work. Thanks for all you do. Please know that you are deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for those words from the board. Our next, our last item is to adjourn, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, for adjourn.
It is now 7:42 PM, and I'm calling to order the Special Organizational Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, May 3rd, 2021. I will now administer the oath of office to the newly-elected members of the Board of Education. If any current board members would like to reaffirm your oath, please join us now, and I'm going to ask all of you to please stand. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the School Board of Indian Prairie Community Unit School District 204 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear or affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow Board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow Board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a Board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public Board meeting.
I shall recognize that a Board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public Board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As a part of this Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Indian Prairie.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Indian Prairie.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
And I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school, our schools, to advance the vision for Indian Prairie, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools or schools to advance the vision for Indian Prairie, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations. Jeannie, will you please call the role?
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Jane?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Fostick?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Public comments for non-agenda items. It is now time for public comments for non-agenda items. Thirty minutes is allowed, but we have no comments, so we'll move on. Public comments for agenda items. We have none for that. And so now we will go to the election of Board officers. Nominations are now in order for the Office of President. Any nomination?
I would like to nominate Lori Donahue as President of Indian Prairie School District 204.
Lori Donahue is nominated and seconded by Mr. Rising, nominated by Ms. Demming. Any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations. The nominations for the Office of President are closed, and we have -- already have a motion. And so, Jeannie, will you please call the role?
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. -- oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Fostick?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
The vote is 7-0 in favor of Ms. Donahue. By receiving a majority of the votes, Ms. Lori Donahue is elected President of the Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So our next item is to nominate -- nominations are in order for the Office of Vice President. So I would like to ask for nominations from the Board for Vice President.
I move that the Board nominate Mark Rising for Vice President of the Board of Education.
I'll second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for the Office of Vice President are closed. Jeannie, please take a role.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Fostick?
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
The vote is 7 to 0 in favor of Mark Rising, receiving the majority of votes. Mark Rising is elected Vice President of the Board of Education. Congratulations.
President Donahue?
Six, 6-0? 6-0? 7-0? 6-0. 6-0. Oh, didn't mark that vote.
No, we have a Board member.
Mr. Cruz? Oh, yes. Okay, sorry. Okay. Thank you. 6-0 in favor of Mark being elected, so thank you.
And Jeannie, we probably need a correction on the --
I did. I corrected. Thank you.
Thank you.
...this is not here.
Okay, nominations are now in order for the Office of Secretary.
I move that the Board nominate Susan Demming for the Office of Secretary.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Secretary? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for the Office of Secretary are closed. Susan Demming being the only candidate nominated for the Office of Secretary. Jeannie, will you please call the role?
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Aye.
Ms. Fostick?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
The vote is 6 to 0 in favor of Ms. Demming. By receiving the majority of votes, Ms. Demming is elected Secretary of the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we move to the appointment for the Illinois Association of School Board Governing Board of Representatives. I'm looking for a nomination.
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry. That the Board of Education appoint Natasha Grover as the IASB Governing Board Representative.
I'd like to second that motion.
Natasha Grover is nominated. Are there any other nominations for appointment to the Illinois Association of School Board Governing Board of Representatives? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for the appointment of the Illinois Association of School Board Governing Board of Representatives are closed. Jeannie, please take role.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Fostick?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
The vote is 6 to 0 in favor of Ms. Grover. By receiving a majority of votes, Ms. Grover is appointed to the Illinois Association School Board Governing Board of Representatives for the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have one action item, and it is to approve the school calendar. So I would like someone to make a motion to -- is there any discussion?
Ms. Donahue, this is approval for the Board of Education meeting calendar. Just that correct.
Oh, yes. So I need a motion to approve the 2021-22 school board meeting calendar as presented.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2021-22 school board meeting calendar as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jeannie, will you take the role?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Fostick?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. And our last item is a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.